...provisions of the New Jersey Open Public Meeting Act, the Highland Park Board of Education has given adequate notice of this meeting by having published the date, time, and place of this meeting in the Home News Tribune and has posted notice of this meeting at Highland Park Middle School, 330 Wayne Street, Highland Park, New Jersey. We need a motion to accept Mr. Shalala as our alternate board secretary for the remainder of the 14-15 school year.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion on that?
Forgive me because I was looking down. Who moved that?
Catherine moved. I seconded and seconded.
Okay. He's your, we're appointing him as our alternate board secretary for the remainder of the year.
Correct.
We're not putting Linda out of the job.
Right. Just making.
Okay, then Bill, we could have a roll call on that.
Ms. Iversa?
Yes.
Ms. Berkowitz?
Yes.
Ms. Ball?
Yes.
Ms. Chimerusti?
Simorusti, I'll help you out there. That's okay. Yes.
Mr. Deeds?
Yes.
Mr. Ross?
Yes.
Ms. Sherber?
Yes.
Mr. Sherman? Ms. Wharton?
Yes.
Mr. Wharton. I can't even tell the person I'm sitting next to.
Happens frequently.
Item four is actually the roll call for the meeting, which I imagine should have been before the, any, anything was moved.
Well, I guess we can say we've done that then. Would you like a formal?
We should have a formal roll call.
Okay. See if I can get the names right this time. Ms. Iversa?
Here.
Here. Yes, here.
It's not just me. Ms. Berkowitz?
Here.
Ms. Ball?
Here.
Ms. Chimerusti?
Here.
It's been a long night. Mr. Deeds?
Present. It's just starting.
Mr. Roth?
Here.
Ms. Sherber?
Here.
Mr. Sherman? Ms. Mr. Wharton?
Here.
Student represents.
Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Shalala, at this point, I would ask you if there are communications?
Yes, we do have two. The courtesy from parent to Linda Moran, the secretary at Bartle School, I will take this moment to say thank you for running a great program. I'm so grateful that the Bartle after-school program has so many happy, caring, fun, engaged, involved caretakers. My kids have so much fun there. It's so nice to pick them up and find them so happy and engaged. I'm relieved that I can count on this consistent, reliable, kind, active, and unprogrammed for our family. The second correspondence is from William R. Farnikus, Dr. of Education, lecturer at Rutgers Graduate School. It was addressed to Mrs. Malouf. On Wednesday, October the 22nd, Nikki Ferengue, a social study educator at Highland Park Middle School, participated as a presenter at the annual conference in Jersey Council for the Social Studies. She was part of a presentation team for the workshop session titled "All Human Rights Are Local: New Jersey is a Laboratory for Social Justice." Nikki did an outstanding job presenting her sample lesson along with examples of student work and the response of her presentation from audience members was very positive. Nikki's presentation exemplified the type of reflective practice emblematic of high-quality social studies teaching, and I was proud to have invited her to participate.
Great. Thank you. Mr. Sue, we missed the, ah, yes. Need a motion to approve the minutes of October 20th, 2014, regular public and executive session?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? Mr. Shalala?
Ms. Iversa?
Yes.
Ms. Berkowitz?
Yes.
Ms. Ball?
Yes.
Ms. Chimerusti?
Yes.
Mr. Deeds?
Yes, abstain, sorry.
Mr. Ross?
Abstain.
Ms. Sherber?
Yes.
Mr. Wharton?
Yes.
Mr. Soto?
Yes, good evening, everyone. Will we begin with a student update?
Okay, so we have some exciting fundraising achievements. Student Congress revived the old tradition of a haunted house in the high school, and it was a great success and raised about $400, so that's good. Additionally, the Make-A-Wish Walk was held on Halloween, and it had about 400 walkers and it raised $3,774 for the Make-A-Wish Foundation. Yeah. So, there's a couple of things regarding a couple of clubs. So, the robotics team is really excited for their future room in the high school's old weight room, and then the weight room is being transferred to another room. Ms. Maharana, she leads robotics. She returned from a Panasonic CDC convention, and the robotics team is moving forward with, from like just regular, like preliminary meetings to actually like building stuff, so that's exciting. Two seniors, Harmon and Chu, have started a coding club, which is, in a way, an extension of the robotics club, for students to learn different computer programs. And sports, the middle school girls finished their season undefeated, so that's exciting. And interest meetings?
In what sport?
Oh, sorry. Did I not say? Oh, middle school girls soccer finished their season undefeated. And interest meetings and preseason begins for the winter sports, which is basketball and wrestling. And we, as student reps, have created kind of like a comment drop-off box in Center Hall to collect people's opinions and like issues that they might want the board to address. So, it hasn't been too active but yet, but we have announcements throughout the school and it's available in Center Hall, so.
All right, so a couple of things in progress right now. We have a survey ready, and I believe we got the approval from the board. And right now, we're just planning the logistics for the survey, how to distribute it to the whole school. We aim to use technology, the Chromebooks especially. Also, Student Congress is planning for Service Day November 26th, and we've got a special keynote speaker from a seeing-eye-dogs corporate, or, you know, organization. It's an extension of what we're doing in DECA. It's another club. It's gonna be really exciting to see this kind of organization come speak at our school. Also, we've got a question to the board on, about policies and issues. It'd be, it'd be great if we could have like a general timeline, since we're doing a survey for the improvement of the high school website, if we could have a general timeline of the high school website improvement, and just an overview of the process of how that's gonna go. Thanks.
Can you remind me again what your survey is? Is it about the website?
Yeah, so it's, I think it's like maybe honestly like five or six questions, just about how often do students use the website? Do they have problems? What improvements they would like to see? You know, that sort of thing.
Did we talk about doing that for parents as well, the survey?
No.
Is that a, can I ask about that? Okay, is that something, I think it would be a good idea to also do that with the parents and the teachers.
Actually, Mr. Lassiter, when we talked to him about approving the report each week, he told me last week that, that middle school and high school, I think the administration or something like that would be holding a workshop for high school and middle school teachers to improve their own websites. I don't know if the board knows anything about that, but that's what I've heard from Mr. Lassiter.
I think that we should put something out. I mean, it's an easy thing to get feedback about that, and obviously, this is an issue that we all recognize to be a pretty important one.
It certainly is, and thank you for bringing that up. As a matter of fact, at our next board meeting, I'll be addressing the website and answering all of your questions, so I have it down. Thank you. Okay. All right, so, we've had extensive conversations in two particular areas, one ESL, three areas, ESL, the Gifted and Talented Program, and the hiring of a high school's school psychologist. So, I wanna report on where we're at in those particular areas. In terms of ESL, the ESL Committee has convened now for the third time. They are at the initial report stage of writing. The committee's gonna meet once again November 14th and on the 21st to finish up three findings and recommendations, and submit their report before Thanksgiving to my office. Then we'll be planning a board presentation scheduled for December 8th by those directly involved with the committee. The presentation is going to serve twofold. Number one, present the process, findings, and recommendations. There'll be probably be about two or three committee members doing that. And the second piece to that presentation is an action plan moving forward as of January. For example, the program structure, the modifications that we're gonna be putting in place, the resources, and then ongoing professional development that we're gonna be providing to all of the, the, the teachers. In terms of the children, we've been having extensive conversations with the teachers and Jen Knapp. Jen Knapp, right now, is planning an ESL after-school language acquisition program. She's about to distribute a survey to parents to gauge their interest in terms of participation, and also the time of day, whether it's gonna be an after-school program, whether it'll be as best suited as a Saturday Academy or during the evening. She's also looking into supplemental materials for sheltered instruction classes. We've had another conversation about looking at really good and strong teacher resource books following sheltered instruction modeled by grade and subject area to be shared with the teachers. Teachers have received also their second of three sheltered instruction workshops. We're currently planning the third one. So that's where we're at in terms of ESL. Now, in terms of the high school psychology program?
Israel, I'm sorry, can I ask you one more question? Can you just define for folks what sheltered instruction is? I think there's a lot of confusion about what sheltered instruction is or isn't, and how that relates to ESL.
Okay. Well, in terms of sheltered, with the ESL program, we have the option of, of pulling students out of the classroom and pushing into the classroom, where sheltered instruction is more of a push-in, where we have certain number of ESL students that are participating within the classroom, and teachers are to be trained in terms of strategies and methodologies to best meet their needs. One of the areas that we've come across with, with the committee, is obviously that some of these kids were designated to be sheltered instruction, but yet, the teachers who were designated to teach them were not properly trained, and that we're up to that point, and how do we best remedy the situation? That is why we put together, led by Bill Shalala, a committee where they would come up with the recommendations moving forward. We were hoping to share with this committee in December our shelter program for January. So, what we're calling sheltered program today is gonna look totally different in January. We wanna make sure that we do right by not only the teachers, but we do right by the kids.
Thank you, Israel.
You got it.
Can I add one thing to that?
Mm-hmm.
I've said this before, the sheltered instruction strategies are basically good teaching strategies. So, it helps all students, it's not just for English language learners, it's for all students to help them acquire academic language, which is the language that you need in the classroom. So, it's, it's a win-win for everybody to have the teachers trained in these strategies.
Correct. Okay. We all know that it's a win-win if, if the teachers are trained in how to use these strategies, and we're up to that point, you know, in providing those services to, to the students and, and to the, the teachers, so. I'll be sharing with you in December the plan for, moving forward for January.
And I really appreciate that, the way you're laying out the program and expectations. I think that's fantastic.
Thank you. All right. At our last board meeting, there was a community member that spoke of her child's case manager. This, the child is no longer in our school system, however, we wanna clarify a couple of points that were shared with, with the community at our last board meeting. She expressed that there was a caseload of 60 per case manager, which is, which is inaccurate. As a matter of fact, one case manager does have 58 students, but the one in question did not have 60. As a matter of fact, the one that did have the 58 students before Bill Shalala came in, that person had 12 more than 58. So, what Bill did was distribute the students equitably, so all of the case managers had equitable amount of students to be serviced. The parent, as I understand it, noted that the average caseload where she works is in the 30s and 40s, and our caseload for the position in question was 48. The caseload in the position in question only manages students in the high school. In other words, the person that we hired as a case, as a psychologist for the high school only works for the high school, while the person with the 58 students in, works with both middle school and high school students and is successfully managing her caseload. And in fact, the case managing question is the only one of six members who only serves one building. So, the high school psychologist only serves one building, which greatly lessens pressure on that position. There was another, and we can go on and on, but there was another question related to the 80%. Why is this person then, has been hired for 80% of the time? This person is a doctoral candidate, and because of that, doctoral candidates have to have at least some time to be managed for clinical psychologists, which is already being provided to her by our clinical psychologist, Scott. So, that is why, that's for the 20%. So, she will remain with the teen center, that 20%, and the, the remaining 80% will be devoted exclusively to the high school. She has a caseload that's very manageable. When we look at caseloads, it's not about one person, it's about an entire team. And one team member, if, if the caseloads are overlapping, one, you know, member will help someone else if, if, if that need may arise. As a matter of fact, even Bill Shalala, if he finds it necessary to intervene, he will even pick up some of the, the load. So, I wanna reassure everyone that all of the kids are being serviced despite the 80% and 20%. And so, when we talk about the 80% psychology position, once again, as a doctoral candidate, she is required to do an internship for two hours of clinical supervision, which is being provided once again by Scott Roth, our clinical psychologist, hence the 20% at the teen center and the 80% at the high school. Now, someone also asked the question about, you know, what type of planning took place to make these decisions? And I wanna talk a little bit about cohesive planning. We conduct briefly sessions with, at all levels, with everyone in this district associated with children to ensure a clear communication is properly channeled. Mr. Shalala was asked to collaborate with the teen center. Therefore, he met with Ms. Samoa, he met with Mr. Roth to work out all of the details and report back to me. It was, it was at this point where the decision was made to hire the psychologist for the high school. So, we don't wanna give anyone the impression that whenever we make decisions, it's just out of a vacuum. You know, we take a lot of pride in sitting with people and having these conversations and ironing out all the intricacies to ensure that whatever plan is put forward, it's strong and deep. Okay?
The other part of the question, though, was, that puts us down a staff member in the teen center, the 80%, that that person is now moved out, and what is the, what's the plan in the teen center?
No, the teen center has already addressed that. As a matter of fact, I had a personal conversation with Elizabeth Samoa, and I said, "Are you down? Do you need help? Do we need to hire someone?" He goes, "Absolutely not, Mr. Soto. We're good at all levels." I said, "Okay, fine." I mean, if, if, if Samoa, who's the director of the teen center, is assuring me that, "No, we're fine," then, then, then I have to believe that we are. So, we've had this conversation extensively with Mr. Bill Shalala and with me, and today I reiterated, once again, "Do you need additional personnel?" And the answer was no. We had everything covered.
Okay, well, that was the piece of the puzzle that was missing at the last meeting.
Thank you, gentlemen.
All right. Thank you. The third item that the committee wanted to know a little bit about was the Gifted and Talented Program, so let me just go up to the front, quickly take it through this process.
Chris, do you have the wireless mic? Oh, he's got it, that's good.
Chris, do you have the wireless mic? Oh, he's got it, that's good.
Sometimes I feel stressed about being gifted. Sometime, sometimes I feel stressed about...
Chris?
Sometimes I feel stressed about being gifted. Really think that everyone knows what you know, but they really don't because you're working at a faster pace. No kids, but like at least harder school. Realize that I can do more than someone. It can be strange, but it has its advantages. I don't think gifted people are any different than people, or people don't learn as fast. It's just that we have the capability of learning fast, and that's not a bad thing. I know a lot of information, but most other kids don't. We excel in things like math, reading, science, all the basic stuff. But it's hard for me to make friends out of school because a lot of people think I'm really brainy. Honestly, I'm not trouble in class because I got done all my assignments early and I talk to my friends in class. I was very bored. I maybe read two books, talk to my friends sometimes. I got done 15, 10 minutes before everyone else, so I just went outside and read. Extremely bored, and the work there was extremely easy. I used to be so bored. I'll get done super fast, and I knew stuff that the teachers were teaching us, so I would get in trouble for not paying attention, even though I could do stuff before they explained. Get to experience how hard and how active you are. Still doing addition and stuff. I mean, when I came here for second grade, you're like getting into multiplication and stuff. It's just that it has more challenges in studies, and really, I try to see if they know as much as me, and I find out that they're still working on stuff I learned in second grade.
Can we go straight to Chris, straight into the PowerPoint?
Ladies and gentlemen, I wanted to begin this presentation, so you can hear it from kids, not from me. So, I'm always interested about what kids have to say about gifted and talented programs, about how they view themselves as gifted and talented or not gifted and talented. So, today, we're going to present to you the Gifted and Talented Program as it exists today. As it exists today. Are there gonna be modifications? Absolutely. And I'm gonna take you along this journey, so please bear with me. Gifted and Talented Program Overview, Highland Park Public Schools. So, in terms of the teacher, we have Wendy Amsterdam, which we hired. She has an MA in Gifted Education and Talent Development from the University of Connecticut. She has nine years of experience, and she is a certified K-3 elementary teacher, as well as 5-12 English teacher. When you establish a program, there has to be some underlying beliefs, right? Some core values associated to any program, right? And these are our core values. These are our underlying beliefs, that every learner is unique and gifted in some ways, that those that are chosen to be part of the program are not part of this elitist program, that students have the responsibility to use their gifts in a very positive manner and work collaboratively to, to work on essential life skills. We believe that learning is mostly effective when students enjoy what they are learning, but not only that, when that learning is most meaningful and enjoyable, when it's tied into real-world applications. We're teaching them that perseverance is very important, that they need to be, they need to show perseverance when they are given challenging tasks. So therefore, based on that, our goals are, we wanna push the limits of students' critical thinking and analysis. And by the way, we wanna push these limits not only on gifted and talented kids, this is across the board, these are all children. We wanna be helping students to persevere when meeting these challenges. We wanna continue challenging students to reach toward their potential, both intellectually and socially. We're gonna give students the opportunity to do creative problem-solving and defend their approaches. So, it's not only learning, it's defending what they're learning. So, some, and by the way, these points were already cleared by those parents whose kids are participating in the Gifted and Talented Program. Wendy Amsterdam met with them, and she shared the program, and they had a wonderful time, a wonderful time of, of, of engagement, of problem-solving. And so, she shared with them that those that were accepted into a program, we use multiple measures of, multiple measures, district and standardized tests. So, we use the SAGES, that's the screening assessment for gifted elementary and secondary students, and we use the New Jersey Assessment of Student Knowledge, right? So, we developed a, a composite score for those kids, right? With 134, 135 and up, they were probably accepted. Those that fell below that composite score, we talked about then, can we retest the children during the year so they can go back into the program, so they can make it into this program? So, it's not, "Sorry, you didn't make it, gotta wait for next year." That's not gonna happen, all right? So, they will be revisiting this criteria with the students and even retesting if need be. Now, program sequence schedule. So, for, in Bartle, for grades three through five, two periods per, per week for 45 minutes, basically a pull-out program, all right? Pull-out program for ELA and one for Social Studies. In grade two, it's flexible grouping. So, you're gonna have kids that are gonna get it, and the flexible grouping comes in when a child is already mastering a skill that's being learned, right? That child is taken out to continue, all right? But then, there might be some other kids that might have mastered a particular concept, or they're gonna be pulled out. So, the concept of pulling out the same children is not gonna happen, all right? That's why it's flexible, flexible grouping. All right. So, pre-tests, compacting, that's what we mean by compacting the curriculum with students who have mastery in particularly unit of instruction and flexible grouping. Enrichment, challenge activities, pull-out also, twice weekly, and class differentiation and enrichment, as well as full-class enrichment units. So, this program is not only for the gifted and talented, there are gonna be many opportunities for enrichment opportunities for the kids that are already in the classroom. There's gonna be a pull-out in math and possibly language arts. For kindergarten and grade one, enrichment units, full-class push-in. So, this model's a little different for the little ones. It's gonna be enrichment units, full-class push-in, once a week for four cycles, starting in November. It's gonna be a four-week cycle. Identified students will receive the pull-out services as needed. So, once again, for those four-week cycles, all right, K and one, it'll be an enrichment program. Everyone is participating. Selected students, all right, will be pulled out, and that's a conversation between Wendy Amsterdam and the teacher. So, whatever is being done throughout the year with the entire group and with individual students, that will be a conversation throughout the entire year with the teacher and Wendy Amsterdam. So, that's the sequence of the schedule for both Bartle and Irving. Enrichment initiatives, opportunities. So, school-wide enrichment opportunities, the entire grade, fourth and fifth grade, they're gonna be having a learning fair. Independent interest, passion, research, and presentation. So, they're gonna be having this, this learning fair based on subjects, themes, that they're interested in, that they're passionate about, and then be engaged in the process of researching and then presenting. There're gonna be kids as authors, scholastic writing contests, it's gonna be an art and writing contest, they're gonna be a pro, there's gonna be a program called academically speaking, it's like a Jeopardy contest. Then there's gonna be a program with forensic, interpretive reading for, for the entire fifth grade, Brain Bowl Trivia Bee, Math Marathon and Learning Carnival. So, we have, yeah, especially Ms. Amsterdam, she's gifted and she's got a lot of wonderful ideas. She is working out even more activities to engage more students during the entire year. Now, for fourth grade, these are full-grade initiatives, all right? For fourth grade, person who has made a difference, a learning flair explores students' passion and interest. The fifth grade is gonna be having a heritage fair, that's six weeks of enrichment. There's gonna be a law fair, that's like a mock trial for grades four and five, and then there're gonna be some trips, right? So, in terms of the trips, I've also been asked, well, are these trips exclusively for the Gifted and Talented Program? But they don't need to be. See, when someone asks me that question, I start scratching my head. See, I, I don't get it, because opportunities are for all kids. So, if we want, there is no reason why if the gifted and talented kids are going to the Meadowlands Environmental Center, the teachers can organize a strip also and make it a class trip. There are many opportunities. I don't wanna give the impression to anyone that whatever trip we organize are exclusive just for the gifted and talented. No, trips are for everyone. Now, there's a cost factor behind that and that's something that we're working out. Let me share with you a unit description of learning goals. So there are multitude of learning goals. And as you can see, the idea is to integrate the curriculum as best as possible. And so kids are going to be engaged in a slew of learning goals and activities, such as, for example, in this particular case for third grade, they're going to be studying the rainforest, understanding self, alright, and others, and they're going to be creating a biome for animal and bird research and then they're going to present. If we're going to continue down, if you move down to math, science, and art, alright, understanding place value in our number system as well as others. Some of the activities that they're going to be doing, creating their own number system. And if we look at grade four, we're going to continue with integrating the curriculum. Look at the first one, metacognition, that's kids learning about what they're learning, thinking about what they're learning, understanding self and others, learning style inventories, brain hemispheres. And I don't want to repeat every single one because you can read that. But certainly the point here is that these kids will be engaged in multiple opportunities for in-depth studies of themes and subjects. Likewise, with grade five, integration of the curriculum, creating modular origami, brainstorming and designing and building a 3D representation of literacyism and architecture. They're going to be reading myths and learning about different cultures and bringing myth from one culture to another. They're going to be researching, exploring. And so moving forward, this is what we have now, but there's room to grow. I've been meeting with teachers. I met with a particular teacher last week and we met with the GNT teacher. And moving forward, this is what we would like to see. A gifted and talented program is required by the state, however, the state does not mandate how such a program is to be implemented. We will be forming a committee to reexamine the gifted and talented program, composed of parents, teachers, and administrators. The program will continue to evolve, so this is the beginning. As we move along, the program will continue to be evolved and will continue to create more resources for all children in the future. And I keep on going back to all children. Some parents and children are concerned about the program limiting the opportunities for each student. Alright, I understand that. Therefore, we need to examine this and ensure equity in educational opportunities, not just for the gifted and talented, but for all. Much of the curriculum offered by the program would excite many children and can further supplement the general curriculum. We will continue examining the best means of implementing enrichment. The committee will consider push-in models, alright, as a means of serving all children. Some other experienced districts are using the push-in model, finding it a proven and effective way to minimize and divide students and parents' experience. But I'm going to caution you. We want something that's great for kids, all children. And this is going to take a little in-depth planning and going beyond just the rhetoric and actually looking at the plan and say, okay, what opportunities can we extend for all of the kids? But there is a reality that some children really need additional help. Just the same way that we provide services for kids, you know, that are not meeting the standards and we have after-school programs for them, alright, and we have pull-outs program just to help them, alright? We need to do the same thing for, because we do have some gifted and talented kids, as you heard from them, that said that when they're there, they're bored. What are we doing for them? And so the idea is, you know, what comprehensive approach can we take to address this situation where we can feel proud of a program that meets the needs of both enrichment in the classrooms for all, while not forgetting about the gifted and talented also, that they also have their own particular needs? And this is where I invite you, the community, to help us figure this out because our program is going to evolve this year. So this is just the beginning. This committee is going to begin probably within about two weeks and we're looking at certain changes and making the modifications necessary in January. So for us, January of 2015 is going to be very significant as we approach GNT, ESL, scheduling, and all of these intricate parts that will make our district very successful. And so having said that, instead of just a gifted and talented program, really the future is Highland Park Public Schools Academic Enrichment for All. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Soto. You had anything else for us?
Thank you. Oh, that's it. Oh, other than we do have the after-school programs, tutorial programs are going to begin. I have a whole slew of information, but right for now, November 11th, we will begin our tutorial programs across the board. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you for the very detailed superintendent's report. Claire, can we have the curriculum committee report, please?
Yes, the curriculum committee did meet tonight. We only discussed policies and you'll hear more about those policies in the policy section of the agenda. On the agenda, I want to call your attention to item number five. That concerns appointing Wendy Rosen to present two additional workshops at the teen center. I thought it's interesting to note, and I think this is a very good thing, that the workshops she's going to present is to help students identify their strengths and abilities and to set goals for themselves. I think that is an excellent, excellent, excellent workshop because I know my 10th grader could use that, as I'm sure other people's kids in the high school can use that.
What is that acronym? Funding for these workshops will be paid through?
School-based Use Services Program.
Okay, any other questions on curriculum items? Catherine, can we have the finance?
The finance committee did not meet tonight. I would just draw your attention to item number four, the funds from the Education Foundation to support Camp Bernie. It's such a valuable program and we really appreciate the support of the Ed Foundation to keep this going year after year. And I think, do you want to address item nine?
Yeah, sure. Number nine is the ratification of the MOA and the salary guides for the teachers' union and the teacher secretaries, teachers' associates, and paraprofessionals. And, you know, we're very pleased to finally be able to present this. There was a number of meetings that occurred earlier in the year. We came to an agreement and there's been, you know, a review process of the salary guides and the final agreements are all pretty much set up. And so now we are ready to ratify it at the board level. We're very pleased to be able to do so and we look forward to moving forward with the HPEA in the future. Any other comments on these items?
I just want to mention now that when we get to, I know we're not doing that now, but when we do get to voting on the curriculum items, on nine, the ratification of the memorandum of agreement, I'm going to abstain on that simply because my husband is a member of the NJEA. I was not a part of negotiations or any closed session meetings about the contract. I have no information about the contract whatsoever, so I just feel that's the best way for me to proceed. It has nothing to do with the contract itself.
Thank you, Darcy. Anne, can we have a personnel and communications report, please?
Yes, Personnel Committee met tonight, Personnel and Communications Committee met tonight and discussed a number of personnel items, including maternity leave, medical leave. We have a couple of, we have three resignations on the agenda tonight and some new hires. Additionally, I'm going to be reading in to the addendum that our new HIB coordinator is going to be Bill Schlala as soon as Ralph Hoag's resignation becomes effective.
And we also have to read in change for the date of...
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, and that would be...
For number, for item five?
Yes, so that, her, her date of resignation will actually be...
November 10th. Oh, November...
Wednesday.
Wednesday, November 5th.
November 5th. So we'll be making that change as well.
And item 13 is definitely a positive step forward for the district. It's the appointment of Saskia Marina as a volunteer communications and marketing liaison. She'll be starting with us tomorrow. This is Wednesday, November 4th, right? So this should be Tuesday, November 4th for number 13.
Can we point out that Saskia is here tonight?
Sure.
And welcome her?
Yes.
As our new volunteer?
Yes, welcome and congratulations. And we look forward to the improvements that Saskia can help us make, especially when we're looking at things like the website and we're looking at things like correspondences that are going to go out to the community. So we very much thank her for her willingness to volunteer her time to the district.
And thank you for pointing that out.
Okay. We've come to the moment of truth, policies. We're going to be starting the policies conversation. Adam's not here, so if, if you don't mind, I'll sort of take the reins on this. We're going to be tabling a number of policies. There are a large number of these policies will be tabled because of a miscommunication with printed material and material that was made available to board members on the Google Drive. There are a few policies that will also be tabled because the policies as written don't actually meet current regulations and we need to get more information about some of the specifics. All of these policies will be brought for first reading at the next meeting. And the policies that will be tabled are 2415.01, 2415.03, 2431, 2431.4, 5305, 5306, 5308, 5310, 5339, 5512, 5530, 5600, 5756, 6511, and 8505. For the few that were actually included in the packet, if you have any comments regarding those?
Can we go through them one by one? Can we go through them one by one? Because, I mean, we've got the whole packet, so if we just...
Well, the ones that are being tabled.
Right, right. But if we could just do the numbers tabled, then go to the next one tabled or not tabled, do you know what I mean?
Well, so do we have the list of the tabled policies? Okay. Does all the board members have a list of the tabled policies?
No.
No.
How would we have a list?
Because I just read them.
Well, I can't mark them on my computer and I don't have a paper agenda.
Okay, so the tabled policies, what we can do is, the policies that we will review today, we will talk about those policies. I feel like that's a better way to do this. There are a couple of policies that were included in the packet, although I have all the policies, so I don't know exactly what was on the Google Drive, but...
But just, we're not doing anything that was on the Google Drive, but not in our packet, right? Because...
Correct.
Okay, because I didn't look at the drive, I just looked at our packet.
No, no, exactly, right. And I think that's the case for most folks. 2415.01 and .03 were both included in your, in your printed materials.
Packet, yes.
Except those are being tabled.
Okay.
So if you have questions about those two...
Saying that's just for purposes of...
Those are purposes of review because 2415.01, for example, has information about, you know, the CINI and it has Kappa and these terms that, you know...
Don't exist.
They don't exist anymore. So the first, the first policy to...
Did this come this way from Strauss Esme?
You know, if it did, then this, then they sent an old version or something. You will notice that this is, actually, so this policy was adopted in 2011, it's reviewed in 2014, so this is not an updated version.
So it may just be old, okay.
So we have to get an updated version with the language. And the curriculum committee did discuss these policies, but we feel that their legal team should vet the, you know, the language since it's all regulation-based prior to us passing a policy in that regard. So the first policy that we will review is 2440, which is summer session. Here, Ashley.
What about 2431.4? That's table two?
That policy was tabled because we were, we're going to ask the administration about whether there is a similar policy that exists that speaks to prevention and treatment of head injuries and sports-related injuries for non-interscholastic events. This policy is specific to interscholastic events, so it doesn't include things like scrimmages, gym class, et cetera. So we need to know whether this is going to be something that we'll make all-inclusive or whether we have something else or whether it's part of, I don't know, regular school protocol or something like that. So 2440 is the first session, first policy that we'll discuss, so...
Dan, I'm sorry. 2415.03, I think we just passed that. I think there was no substantive, there was no changes and no comment during the committee.
Yeah, I have written on mine, fine.
Oh, you have that?
Yeah.
This was one that I, alright, I'm sorry, I misspoke about that then. 2415.03 then is the first one that we can discuss. So Bill, just make that note that we're not tabling 2415.03. The only substantive change, I think this is a substantive change, is in the third paragraph, the second full sentence...
I'm sorry, which one? I'm sorry, Dan, which one are we on?
Sure, 2415.03.
It's the second policy in the packet.
Highly qualified teachers.
Yes, we have put it back. Okay, so the, this, this sentence, "When a teacher changes teaching assignments, comma, which requires different content expertise, additional highly qualified teacher forms must be completed and kept on file." So this really, I think it should say "that" instead of "which" because a teacher can change teaching assignments that don't require different content expertise, right? So merely by changing teaching assignments, that doesn't mean that someone needs different certification, but the "which," the way this is written, actually states that. So we can just get rid of the comma and the "which" and just change it to "that." Okay?
Good catch.
Thank you.
You said you were just a math teacher then.
No one, no one ever said that.
It's Highland Park Education, I think.
That's right. Any other comments on 2415.03? Okay. This is, this is tabled. Okay, 2440 is summer session. Are there any comments about 2440?
I had a question. The, the way I was reading it, it starts out that the Board of Education may conduct a summer session and then it says the Superintendent of Schools will develop a summer session program. And so I feel like it needs some kind of...
Equivocation.
Yeah, so it's, if it is agreed that the summer session will be held, the Superintendent of Schools will develop a summer session program.
Yeah.
Okay. Do you want to read that in again?
If it is agreed that a summer session will be held...
If the board determines...
If a board determines that a summer session will be held.
Bill, doesn't the first line of it say that? The Board of Education may conduct a summer session?
It may, which it leads to doubt, but then, I mean, to say may, to start off with a "may" and then to say the Superintendent of Schools will develop, which is a has-to.
An absolute.
Yeah.
So it has to be, there has to be an equivocation, yeah.
Well, I mean, I think that's what those first two sentences are trying to do. They may, if it's going to happen, it has to be approved by the board and then it's kind of like, if it's approved by the board, then this is what happens.
But that's what we're including.
If it's approved by the board.
Right. If there's doubt in my mind, then I want it written so that it's clear to everybody.
So maybe that's where it can happen then, is in that second sentence? The Board of Education may conduct a summer session if a summer session is approved.
It would be the first sentence of the second full paragraph, the Superintendent...
No, I know, but I was just reading this part too, which seems to be trying to inform that.
I think maybe just, we can, after number three, we can just write something like, if the board, you know, approves the, you know, that a summer session will be held, whatever better language that is, the following will occur, colon, and then just have everything else there.
That makes sense.
Is that what you said?
Yeah. Yeah. Okay, so 2440...
Just give me the change.
Okay, so after the, after item 3?
Yes.
Help with the language a little bit, but if the board determines the need for a summer session, comma, the following provisions will apply.
Colon.
Colon.
Just wanted to add mine, two cents.
Good job.
And Greg, you did not go to Highland Park High School?
Pardon me?
You did not go to Highland Park High School?
No, ma'am.
But you still knew that about the colon?
Yeah.
That's also impressive.
Thank you. I tried hard.
That'll go after number 3. Yeah. All right? Okay, thank you. Nothing else on that policy, correct? Okay, 2468, independent educational evaluations. Oh, is this one that I have?
We didn't have that.
Okay, 2468 will be tabled. If I call out a number and I'm the only one who has it, just...
Smack it.
Don't do that.
Okay, do you have people assessment?
Yes.
2622.
Now, I'm wondering if this one has the same issues, Dan, that you noted with the first couple? Like, I noted that this is dissemination of the school district's New Jersey School Report Card. We don't call it the New Jersey State Report, or the state doesn't call it the New Jersey School Report Card anymore, it's now the New Jersey School Performance Report.
What page are you on? I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, that's on the first page, the, under dissemination of information, kind of right in the middle of the page. I'm wondering if this one might have the same problems.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, it's interesting because this, so this is definitely an updated policy from Strauss ESME.
Yeah, that's weird, because that's not what they call it now.
It's definitely true. There's the School Performance Report. Okay, we can take a look at this if you feel comfortable tabling it? We can just verify everything that's in the regulations and just make sure that it needs to say what it says.
Yeah, I think that would be one to just send right back to them and say...
Is that the only thing that you got wrong?
Right.
Okay. Notice that these are all curriculum? All right, do we have 3372?
Yes.
Okay. Any discussion on 3372? And I'll note that 3372 incorporates the new Achieve NJ Act that separates teachers who are hired prior to August 6, 2012, and teachers who are hired after August 6, 2012.
Do you want to explain what Teach NJ is?
Not really.
Do you want me to explain it?
Achieve NJ.
Achieve NJ.
Achieve NJ, yes. You want to, go for it.
Well, it's a set of regulations that was passed recently that actually makes it longer, takes, for teachers that, it takes a longer time for teachers to acquire tenure, and it also makes the provisions to bring somebody up on tenure charges, if they're already tenured, it makes it easier to do that. So in the past, it's taken months and months and months and several, several, I don't even know how much, hundreds of thousands of dollars to bring a teacher up on tenure charges. So that whole process has gotten a lot easier, which is good news for keeping good teachers in schools, but not keeping not-so-good teachers.
5117, inter-district public school choice. Any comments on this one?
This is a policy, we have, I mean, if we're not a school choice, it doesn't matter, we have to have this anyway?
Is it a mandatory policy?
It doesn't look like it's a mandatory policy.
So do we need it just to have it? Or do we not really need it?
We don't really need it. Do we have any thoughts about keeping this policy? This is an existing policy in the policy guide right now.
I'd be perfectly happy to remove it if it's not mandatory and we can. I'm not seeing us adopting the inter-district public school choice program.
You know, if it were ever an issue, if we ever needed to, I'm sorry.
No, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to cut you off.
If we ever need, if we ever decided, for whatever reason, that becoming a part of the school's choice program was in fact best for the district, we could always re-adopt this policy. I don't, I don't feel like we need to have it in the policy manual just to have it.
Okay.
There is some language in here, however, Mr. Shaw pointed it out, that there's language that basically means, that covers us as a referring district. So we may want to adopt it.
Oh, I see.
Covers us, I'm sorry, I missed one.
As a referring district, so if a child within our district goes to another school district that's providing that choice, there's language in here.
Ashley, sorry?
Oh, sorry. Yes, so as a referring district, there's language in here that covers a referring district.
I don't know if I'm correct, is inter-district public school choice, I think, only goes within a county? You don't leave the county, or can you leave the county? You can leave the county?
It's 20 miles, right? Oh, no, that's the transportation thing.
Yeah, I'm just not sure.
You can leave the county, you get transportation up to 20 miles, but if your parents, for example, would be willing to take you, you can actually go further afield.
Go wherever. Okay. Because I was just thinking, there aren't any, there aren't any inter-district public school choice districts in Middlesex County, so, but if you can leave the county, then that doesn't matter?
I think one of the Boundbrooks is, South Boundbrook or something like that.
As far as I know, there's...
Boundbrook is?
So I guess I would take it back.
Because Piscataway sends people there.
We do need to have this policy. I take it back.
Well, is, I mean, so what language is in here? Just so that I'm clear, because a lot of, just in glancing at it.
The transportation or aid in lieu of transportation shall be provided to the elementary school people who live more than two miles from the chosen district. That appears to be referring to the referring district.
Yeah, the bottom of page 3, second paragraph, Board of Education of sending districts may adopt, yeah, there's stuff if you're sending out.
Oh, that's right, I do remember this from years ago.
And choice.
Okay, well, I mean, it doesn't hurt us to have the policy in.
Right.
There's no changes, we can move on.
Yep.
5120 is assignment of pupils. This really, this policy adds a lot about higher-order multiples and twins and parents' ability to request in writing, the ability to send their kids to the same course, same class, same teacher, or not.
The only thing that I had was on the second page, there's a typo, the second paragraph, first, second, third, fourth, fifth sentence, it reads, "to any of the pupils in the class or classes, comma, R." So the "R" needs to go away. Or, ah, yeah, maybe that's it. Or classes, or if the principal concludes. The "R" needs to stay and "O" needs to...
Anything else on this policy?
Just 14 days, have we, has there ever been an instance where a child's been moved into a different classroom outside of that scope?
Where are you?
Sorry, top of page 2, "The written request must be submitted to the principal no later than 14 days after the first day of each school year." Is that, is that normal or is it too restrictive or...
Well, I can tell you that we have actually not, we have moved beyond that timeframe in the past for any number of reasons.
Right.
This is about twins, though. This isn't about, this isn't about all students.
Actually, you're right, I apologize, I take that back, thank you.
Okay. We're good on this one?
Yep.
Okay, do we have the defibrillators, 5300?
Yes.
Okay, another mandatory policy. Any comments about this policy?
The only comment I had is it made me wonder if we do have our emergency action plan and if that's all squared away.
We have a, did we buy defibrillators recently? We did, right?
I noticed, actually, when I walked in tonight, I noticed that there's actually a notice saying that we have it, which I think is fantastic.
Good. Okay, the next one then is...
5530.
5530.
This was tabled, because I believe, wasn't it tabled because not all the pages were present?
Yes, so you have a six-page version, and I have a 12-page version with strike-throughs.
Sweet.
So that's why this one was tabled. For 5600, Israel, we're going to need regulations also. So... Okay, so yeah, so this one refers to three specific regulations, so if you could just make a note on that, on 5600, we need 5600's regulation, 5200's regulation, and 5512 also. Those are the three that are referred to in that policy. So, okay, so when it goes up on the Google Drive... Okay, 5615 is suspected gang activity. Was there any discussion or comments on these, on this one? Okay. The next one is 7522.
6511 was tabled.
6511.
Oh, 6511, yes. What was the issue with 6511?
Direct deposit.
The issue was that it said, my question was, in the second paragraph, on, under 6511, and it, direct deposit, it says, "If the board approves a direct deposit program, compliance by an employee shall be mandatory." And I just wondered if we can do that. And I don't know that that's fair to make somebody do direct deposit, because I know some people do not like to do direct deposit.
Saves the district a lot of money.
So the question, the reason that we actually were interested in tabling it was that we weren't sure whether there was actually a state regulation that required districts to provide, to mandate direct deposit for public school employees. Because the question of whether we would make it optional is certainly a discussion that the board would have if it's an option. But if it's mandated by another regulation, that's something that we would need to know.
Sounds like maybe the answer might be in that regulation that's cited, so we need that, Greg?
Yeah. And so, so we were interested in tabling this, getting info from this regulation, and then we'll bring it back.
And also the cost differential, like the cost difference between all-in or, you know, managing exceptions, I think is key too.
Yeah, and if you could ask Linda to take a look at the cost difference in providing direct deposit versus printing paper checks? Because certainly that's, that's really the biggest reason, I think. I mean, convenience is significant, but the cost was something that was talked about when this was implemented originally. Okay, 7522, "School district provided technology devices to staff members." We have 12, 13, and 14 on the very last page.
Wait, hold on, hold on.
Which we assume, unless anyone has anything that they want to add, that we can strike through these, these other blank spaces. Thoughts? Okay. Does anybody have any other comments on this policy?
No.
Okay. 7523 has the same, the same issue. Items 13, 14, and 15 are left blank for potential additions. Does anyone have any potential additions?
No.
Okay, so we can just strike through those three lines as well and move on to 8140...
Actually, there was one thing I wanted to discuss on that one.
Oh, yeah, sure.
The paragraph right underneath where the strike-throughs are on page 3, the first paragraph, "The school district will provide the pupil and parent with written or electronic notification that the technology device provided by the school district may record or collect information on the pupil's activity or the pupil's use of the technology device if the device is equipped with a camera, global positioning system, or other feature capable of recording or collecting information on the pupil's activity or use of the device." Are we already doing that? Do we have devices that do that, like...
Well, almost all devices at this point do that, and it isn't that we would be specifically collecting. The device collects so that if, you know, in some scenario where it became important to know where that device had been, that information could be gleaned from that device. It isn't that we would be somehow collecting that information.
I'm not implying that.
So, but there, yes.
It's just interesting language and...
Yeah, I'm sorry, isn't that, so I think it's just, I think it's just covering us because of things that a device already does without our having, you know, done anything to instigate that.
I think the following sentence is also important. It says, "This notification shall also include a statement that the school district shall not use any of the capabilities in a manner that would violate privacy rights of people or any individual residing with the people." Bless you.
Oh, my goodness. It also might be, there was a big case in suburban Philadelphia where I grew up, where a device that a student had, had a camera, and the camera on the computer showed him taking some pills or something. But when it was brought to the school's attention, somebody decided that he was doing drugs, which he wasn't doing, it was like Advil that he was taking, and he was suspended. And this was a huge, 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 huge issue for the school district. So it may have something to do with that kind of protection.
Right. I mean, I guess my only question was, are, do we have a notice that's going home currently? Is that part of our notification to parents? Because we do have, I mean, obviously, a lot of this is to cover if we have a one-to-one program and kids are actually traveling with the computers. But with a camera, I mean, you know, you've still got a kid sitting at a device, whatever. I'm just wondering if we are covering this in what we're sending home to parents.
It probably requires clarification, because as I read it, it was, in my mind, it was specific to taking it home because of one or two cases that, where that has occurred. So maybe, maybe it's some additional language that, on assignment to home, the written notification?
Maybe it's just a matter of sending a letter home suggesting that, you know, that this is a possibility.
Right.
Right, I mean, this is what this is saying, is that a letter will be being, will be sent home, and if we're not sending one home, then that means we need to be sending one home, so. I think parents understand that any computer now can track you or, you know, whatever.
Okay, 8140, pupil enrollments. Any questions on, comments on this one? Okay. 8330 is pupil records. Any comments on this?
No.
And 8461, violence vandalism reports, reporting? Okeydoke.
And 8505 was tabled.
8505 is tabled, yeah. Okay, the policies for second reading? And I assume that we all have the same ones for this. The first one is 0165, voting. Questions, comments? Okay, the second one is 0168, recording board meetings. Any discussion? Okay, 0173 is duties of public school accountant. Any discussion at this point? Okay, 3126 is induction program for provisional teachers. I had a question, obviously, in this third full paragraph, there's a section there that says "optional." So obviously, that has to either be decided yes or no. But this is about mentoring. Do we want to have the option to pay all or part of the mentoring fee for a teacher? I know that's not traditionally done.
So Linda, I thought, yeah, I thought that this was actually covered by a statute. No? Linda seemed to suggest that when we were talking about it the last time.
You mean, whether, statute as to whether a district is allowed to?
That, and the statute said...
I thought that what we ended up with was what was our impression of what the statute said. said.
Okay, but I don't actually know that there's, there doesn't seem to be anything decided here, because it says optional.
I thought we took that out. Yeah.
Was it, was it taken? Anybody else? I wasn't here, so.
I thought we took it out.
Yeah, because if you take it out, it just ends up saying that the candidate is responsible for the mentoring fee, and I think that's what we decided.
And that's where the discussion ended, and it got taken out. Sorry, I hadn't...
Okay, no, that's fine.
Yeah, so I think that part should just be taken out.
Okay, great.
Crossing that out.
So that's going to be, that'll have a strike through. Okay, any other comments on 3126? 3142, nonrenewal of non-tenured teaching staff member. Okay, 3144, certification of tenure charges. Next, 3144.3, suspension upon certification of tenure charge. Anything on this one? 3159, teaching staff member, school district reporting responsibility.
The only thing on this one is clerical, I'm sorry, we are 3159, right?
3159.
Okay, sorry. On the second page, there's a duplication of the section, teaching staff members, that's done twice, so it seems like we only need, the other ones are formatted so that you only need the one that's not bolded, and that, the one that's in bold should be... Unless it's, oh, whoa, whoa, whoa. All right, so something's, there's two...
Oh, the header.
Two headers, right. Which one is the right one? I think the bold one needs to come out.
Yeah, it's the same thing.
They're the same.
Are they the same? Is it just bold? Okay. All right, so the one has to come out. Okay.
Okay, yeah, so the... Do you see that, Bill, on the second page?
Oh, they're not exactly the same, because one has the M and one doesn't. And it doesn't need the M.
Oh, true, okay.
So the second, I think, on the first page, it doesn't... No, it does have the M. So it needs the M, but it needs to not be bolded.
Okay, so the one that's not bolded, basically, needs to go away, and just change the bolded one with the M to the header.
The way Strauss does them, you'll have that section, teaching staff, then you'll have the 3159, teaching slash, then the only thing that's not part of Strauss is where section in bold print is again. You will then repeat, this is the Strauss outline, you will then repeat that header as 3159, teaching staff member responsibilities. It's the way they do it for every policy. The only thing that's redundant is the, that...
The header, the header appears twice.
Yeah, we're keeping one, it just shouldn't be there twice.
That's the way you'll get the Strauss policy manual.
They don't have it twice.
It happens that, if you go back to Page 4, you have section, teaching staff, 3144.3, you have teaching staff member suspension upon certification.
Right.
And then again, it's repeated.
Yeah, but the header, the header isn't...
So, so Bill, the, wait, 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 wait.
I'm on the wrong page, I apologize.
The bold, the bold header in the second page replaces the plain text header.
Right, you don't need to do that. Okay, it's out.
Okay, thank you. 3232, tutoring services. 3270, professional responsibilities.
I just did want to point out in that one that we did include the change that we discussed last, the last meeting, to increase it to one week for a staff member to meet with their principal if they meet a, if they miss a staff meeting, which I think is great.
Okay. 4124, employment contract.
I don't have a question about that, but I think when we put these through for first reading, in between 3270 and 4124, we had 3373 and 3374, and I think those got...
They're, I believe they're still tabled with the curriculum committee.
So do you guys have those? So those will come back? Because they didn't come back, they didn't come back this time.
That's personnel?
That's personnel, is that us?
Right? Or no?
I could be, I could be wrong. There was two that we tabled, we tabled.
We tabled a bunch. I mean, and this is kind of one of my concerns in this process, is like, we don't, we don't seem to have kind of like a way of tracking the ones that we've...
Well, we are tracking them.
Right.
I mean, they are being tracked in the superintendent's office, but we're doing the best that we can. Okay, so check those, because those are personnel. Three, three series ones should be personnel.
So, Anne, I'll check those.
Yeah. 4124 is good. 4146, I just had a question about the nonrenewal of non-tenured support staff members. It says, when the non-tenured support staff member's performance, second paragraph, does not meet the standards of the district. Now, is there an evaluation tool for, for these staff members? Or is it just, because it seems like there's no evaluation tool at all, that it's somewhat arbitrary? And I don't know if that's the way that...
Doesn't, there, there has to be.
For paraprofessionals?
Yes.
I don't know, you know, firsthand how that's, how that's taken care of.
No, everybody has to be, I mean, up to the coaches, people get evaluated.
The question is, do they have an evaluation tool?
Right. So they're, so they're not, they're not being evaluated through Danielson?
No.
Right, as part of ACHIV NJ? So what is, what is the evaluation tool? Is there an evaluation tool? Or is it sufficient to say, "Does not meet the standards of the district"?
I can honestly tell you that, to my knowledge right now, there is no evaluation tool for our professionals.
So it'd just be the supervisors' impressions of job, job...
It's very generic, the one that I saw.
So it's at-will, and it's basically, okay. Okay.
We don't need an official tool to evaluate paraprofessionals?
There should be a tool.
Okay.
And we're working on that one. In fact, we're working on an evaluation tool for all of the offices and all professional staff.
Okay, so then, what should, what do you think we should do with this, with this policy, then? Okay. Well, if we, so it's, it's in effect, right? I mean, what do you think the timeline is for, for something like this?
Two weeks.
Okay. All right, then we'll table it. Let me make a note on that. You stole my pen.
What, the timeline for what?
Discussing an evaluation tool. Or at least putting some kind of language in here that states that, that references the evaluation tool.
Okay. Not actually creating the evaluation tool.
I don't think two weeks is enough time for that. They exist, right?
Okay.
Okay, and then the last one is...
So it would be like adopting one, finding one that already exists and adopting something. Okay.
The last one is 6480, purchase of food supplies. Any comments on that? Okay. All right. Only one more to go. Okay, so the policy to be reviewed is advertising on school property.
It's on the drive. It's on the drive?
Did you not get a printout of this?
No.
No, we didn't get printouts. It's on the drive. I looked at it, but I didn't know what to be reviewed meant, like...
Did it, okay, so who had a chance to review, to look at the policy? If it's only two or three.
Vaguely looked at it.
Okay, then let's just table it. 6163, under number 3.
Can I ask, like, what brought this, this policy to the forefront, or...
You can ask. I don't have the answer. That would be an Adam question, I think.
Or anybody else on policy?
Yeah, I'm not sure why we're, why we're reviewing it unless, unless there's a self-reviewing sort of mechanism in the policy itself, and maybe that we, you know, because this is a policy that we wrote, that we might have said to be reviewed every two years or something.
Is it current policy, or is it?
It's a current policy.
It is a current policy?
And it's, and it's, it was not even, it's our policy, it's not even Strauss, it's my policy, because we talked about advertising on the field.
The last time we revised or touched this was in 2012. So I think it, it's not a problem for us to market as reviewed. I mean, you can, we can review it again at any time, and I don't see why we would, we can table it and review it, but I think it does make sense to say, on the document, the reason for having the review is that we just want to be able to write the words, "reviewed" in 2014. So we have a record that we actually looked at it.
Okay, so everyone take a look at it, and then we'll just, we can, we can talk about it. I doubt that there will be many changes to it.
That's exactly it.
Right?
Yeah, I'm sorry. Yeah, well, here, this is it.
Did I say that out loud?
Okay. Highland Park Board of Education welcomes public participation. First of all, I'm sorry, thank you very much for everybody, for the review of the policies. I know it's a lot, we will have a lot next time as well.
I did have one more policy comment. There were two policies that I think we ended up tabling, 2481 and 5610, because there was that question about the length of an out-of-school suspension and what that meant for home instruction.
Okay, so let's, let's do this. Send me the comments.
Okay.
And then, curriculum is going to meet next week to discuss, there are, I think, three other tabled curriculum policies, now there are these as well.
Okay.
So, just, you can just send those to me. Okay, public comment, Highland Park Board of Education welcomes public participation and has reserved this time for your comments. When you come up, where are you coming up? State your name, you've done this before. State your name, sign in in the ledger, state your address.
Kimberly Bevelock Crane. Does this thing go down? President of the HPEA, I would like to report that the membership of the Highland Park Education Association has officially ratified the 2013-2016 contract agreement between the association and the O E. We are looking forward to working this contract, and we plan to invite the Board of Education in September of 2015 to begin negotiations for the next cycle. I wanted to also address Policy Number 6511, the mandated direct deposit. We're checking to see if you can mandate direct deposit, but we know that you can't mandate people to get bank accounts, so that may be an issue for you in the future to consider. And the evaluation tool for paras, it's a funny-you-should-ask kind of question. We've been having conversations recently, in the past few weeks, with the paraprofessionals. There is a very brief, very brief tool that really does, certainly does not align with Danielson, and is something that we're looking at as all of the evaluation models, as we're preparing our membership for our new teacher evaluation, we are also including the paraprofessionals' evaluation tool in this conversation, and we're looking forward to working with Israel and including administration in our conversation as well. Absolutely, the paraprofessionals would appreciate a tool that is clear and that applauds the excellence that they bring to the classroom. Thank you.
Thank you, Kim. Is there any other public comments?
Hi, my name's Karen Bilton, I live at 219 Montgomery Street. I'd like to make a brief statement regarding the resignation of Ms. Higginbotham that's announced in the agenda tonight. One of my children is in Ms. Higginbotham's third grade class. First, we'd like to express her appreciation, my appreciation for the excellent instruction that she's provided. We found her to be warm, caring, inclusive, and professional, and I regret that my son will miss out on a full year with this teacher. We wish her the best. While we don't know the reasons behind Ms. Higginbotham's decision to resign, we believe that the fact that her class hosted several ELLs, English Language Learners, in the model known as sheltered instruction, without sufficient support may have contributed to her decision. This model was adopted this year in the elementary grades without the professional development and classroom support that would be needed to make it succeed. This lack of teacher support indicates to us that the adversarial relationship established between the administration and teachers under the tenure of former Superintendent Timothy Capone continues into this year. We're fortunate to enjoy the benefits of a culturally diverse community, however, this comes with the responsibility to provide for the education of all of our children. I encourage the board to continue to research and implement best practices for educating our ELL students in a way that does not place undue burden on our teachers and provides full learning opportunities for all our students. This statement is also supported by Colette Morris and Jason Marsh, parents who have another child in the class. Thank you.
Thank you, Karen. Is there any other public comment? Okay, there is no president's report. Is there any old business? Oh, God, it's like I haven't been here in a meeting. Okay, we need to move the, the board action items. Claire, curriculum?
Okay. I, hold on, I have to get backup. Okay. I would like to move Items 1 through 5 on the curriculum agenda.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any further discussion on those items? Bill, can we have a roll call, please?
What was the second?
Ms. Verstappen.
Yes.
Ms. Berkowitz.
Yes.
Ms. Bowe.
Yes.
Ms. Chimerus.
Yes.
Mr. Dietz.
Yes.
Mr. Ross.
Yes.
Ms. Sherber.
Yes.
Mr. Wharton.
Yes. Catherine, could we have the finance items?
I move Items 1 through 9 on the agenda.
Second.
Is there any further discussion?
Second.
I'm very, very pleased that HPA has ratified the contract and moving forward.
Ms. Verstappen?
Yes.
Ms. Berkowitz?
Yes.
Ms. Bowe?
Yes.
Ms. Chimerus.
Yes, 1 through 8 abstain on 9.
Mr. Dietz?
Yes.
Mr. Ross?
Yes.
Ms. Sherber?
Yes.
Mr. Wharton?
Yes.
Anne, could we have the personnel items with corrections?
Yes. I would like to move Items 1 through 14 on the addendum with the following, and read in Item 15 on the addenda with the following corrections. On Item 5, instead of the date, December 18th, that date should now be November 5th. And in order to, to make sure that the district has, as is required, a harassment, intimidation, and bullying coordinator, as Ralph leaves us, I'd like to read in the following item. I move that the Board of Education accept the recommendation of the superintendent to appoint William Shalala as the new harassment, intimidation, and bullying coordinator effective November 14th, 2014.
That was 15.
Twenty...
Number 15.
Yeah, number 15.
Second.
Okay, and we also, number 13, that date should just be changed to Tuesday, November 4th.
Oh, right.
Okay, and I just want to say thank you to Ralph. If you, if you've met him, if you've worked with him, he's an absolutely wonderful guy. And he's going back, can I say where he's going back? He's going back to the Department of Education, much to our chagrin, but he's really done a wonderful job in Highland Park, and I wish him the best.
Second.
Wait, comment?
Yeah, is there any other comments?
I also wanted to, you know, reiterate my regrets about number 5, the resignation of Mrs. Higginbotham, and wanted to ask if, with some of the folks that are leaving us, if we are conducting exit interviews... if we are conducting exit interviews to garner information from?
We have spoken about an exit interview and I'll be forwarding that information once again to the principal and see if we can make that happen, but it's only if the, if the teacher would also accept that exit interview.
Okay, and on numbers 12 and 13, I just wanted to ask you, Dan, actually, you had mentioned a couple of board meetings ago, bringing Matt in to give us the findings of the communications task force, I think we're calling it a task force. Is that still happening? What's?
It's, it will happen. Matt's a busy guy. I think it will be, it might start as a report to the Personnel and Communications Committee and then there can be some discussion about how that will be presented out publicly or if, if he needs to present it out publicly.
Okay, and because, you know, I just wanted to, I just wanted to mention that, you know, personally, and I don't know, I don't, I may be alone in this, but I would have, I would have preferred to have had that information before we were putting somebody in place so we, as a board, have an idea of what our communication strategy is and what it is we're specifically asking this person to do. Are we looking at social media? Is this just about the website? You know, what, how have, how has this task force that we've, you know, asked to look at this for the last year, what are their recommendations? Otherwise, I don't know how we're giving, we're giving direction to someone who's, who's just starting out when we really haven't discussed what the direction of our communications should look like.
Okay. Is there any other discussion on these items? Okay.
Ms. Versa?
Yes.
Ms. Berkowitz?
Yes.
Ms. Bowe?
Yes.
Ms. Chimeruski?
Yes, one to 11, no 12 and 13.
Mr. Deeds?
Yes.
Mr. Ross?
Yes, and you have to also respond to Darcy 14 and 15.
Oh, I'm sorry, yes on 14 and 15.
I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Yes on?
Yes, on the addenda, I'm sorry.
It's okay.
Ms. Sherber?
Yes.
Mr. Wharton?
Yes, abstain on number 13.
Abstain on?
Thirteen.
Okay, I will move the policies. So we're going to be moving items one through, I guess, one and two, right? We're going to be moving items one and two. We're tabling the items, the policies that we've spoken about.
Yes, we've listed the ones we're tabling when you discuss them.
Okay.
So we'll list the ones that we're voting on.
So we're, okay, you want to list the ones that we will be moving?
Yes, why?
Okay, so 2415.03, 2440, 3372, 5117, 5120, 5300, 5615, 7522, 7523, 8140, 8330, and 8461 for first reading. For second reading, it's all of them with the exception of 4146, which will be tabled.
Correct.
And then item three is not going to be moved at all because the only policy that's on there is being tabled. Okay? So we need a second?
Second.
Any discussion, more discussion on policies? Okay.
Ms. Versa?
Yes.
Ms. Berkowitz?
Yes.
Ms. Bowe?
Yes.
Ms. Chimeruski?
Yes.
Mr. Deeds?
Yes.
Mr. Ross?
Yes.
Ms. Sherber?
Yes.
Mr. Wharton?
Yes.
You're getting in a groove, I like this.
Game there.
I think I'm going to start pronouncing my name the way you pronounce it, I like it better.
Well, somebody with the names pronounced a million ways.
No, I like it, you're getting the Italian in there, you're getting the Chimerus.
All right, for the president's report, there is no president's report. For old business, is there any old business? Is there any new business?
I have an item for new business.
Okay.
It's just a simple reminder for everybody at home, but I don't know when you're going to see this, and for everybody in the audience, tomorrow is election day. Does everybody realize that? And that there's a board election? So make sure you go to the polls, even if you don't really want to, because it's our right and our responsibility to vote.
Thank you, Claire. Is there any other new business?
Yes, I would like to just report out that I attended the New Jersey School Boards Association workshop last week in Atlantic City from Tuesday to Thursday. I wanted to thank the board for approving my travel to go and thank the taxpayers for subsidizing my, my time at the workshop. I found it extremely enlightening. I went to some fantastic sessions, got some really strong input, I feel, on a couple of items in particular. I went to a session about superintendent searches and got a lot of fantastic information that I think is going to be really helpful for us moving forward in the next year. Another extremely informative discussion that I went to was about the Hillsborough School District. It was the superintendent and two board members that presented about how they've changed their committee structure to align with their strategic plan. And it was a fantastic structure that really allows for a tremendous amount of transparency, not only with the public, but also among committees. So committees meet a couple of weeks before the actual meeting, there are minutes that are, that are written up of the individual committee meetings, those are shared then among the full board so that when board members come to a meeting, you actually have a very keen awareness of what is going on in other committees. There's time and room for discussion, not only between committees and board members, but between board members and administration. So that's something that I would really like to look forward to presenting to the full board and possibly considering for our own structure. And something else that I participated in right before I went to the convention, but then kind of followed up with at the convention, was last Sunday, I participated in a panel in Montclair with four other board members from across the state. And it was a fantastic conversation and part of the conversation actually revolved around something that we haven't discussed yet at the board table, but I would certainly like to open up a dialogue about, which is the new graduation requirements that the commissioner recently announced that involve PARC. And I've been gathering some information about those requirements and I'd like to share those within the next couple of weeks with the board in the form of a resolution that we can all take a look at and see if it's something that we would, that we would be interested in adopting. So I started working with some of these other board members with other, that are on boards across the state who are also looking at, looking at this issue and considering a resolution. So that's something that I'll bring forth in the next couple of weeks. And then that also actually brought up a question for you, Claire, I believe you're the, the, our representative for the delegate assembly?
Yes.
For school boards?
Yes.
And this was, this was something that kind of, across the board and speaking with other board members, some boards handled this differently than others. What happens at the delegate assembly is resolutions get put forward by individual boards and then those resolutions go before the delegate assembly to get then adopted by the New Jersey School Boards Association as a whole. So as far as I know, this is a process that we're not, we haven't really participated in and other boards actually review the, the resolutions that are going to be voted on at the delegate assembly. Because when a delegate goes to the assembly, they should be representing the opinion of the full board. But yet, as far as I know, we're not taking the resolutions that are going to be voted on, voted on at the delegate assembly and presenting them to the full board so that the full board can then discuss those resolutions and say, yes, we agree with this, or no, we don't agree with it, or we would change this. So I think that's something that moving forward, we really need to start to do. And I think the next one is in December, maybe? And there are a few resolutions that are, that are being considered, so I'd really like to see those brought forth to the, the full board so we can take a look at those and see if those are resolutions that, as a board, we support or, or don't support because then otherwise, all we can do is, you know, one delegate is going and they can only vote based on their own opinion. And that doesn't necessarily represent the opinion of the full board.
Thank you.
Sure.
Any comments as to Darcy's comments?
Just two quick questions. The, the individuals that presented on the restructure, committees, et cetera, whereabouts, are they local?
It was Hillsborough.
Hillsborough, okay.
It was a superintendent and two board members. Luckily, one of the, one of the board members is also Saber Schools New Jersey organizer, so she and I had some familiarity with each other, so I'll follow up with her and get a lot of information about that.
Okay, if they'd be open to presenting at a different venue.
Yeah, I think they absolutely would be. You know, if I, I can present to, you know, I'll talk to Dan about how best to do that. I can present what I learned, you know, if there's interest to the full board, either at the next meeting or the meeting after that, you know, whatever may fit. And then if there's interest, significant interest, we could certainly look into reaching out to them to see if they'd be interested to come here and present what they presented at the workshop.
Thank you.
Anything else on Darcy's items? Okay, the, the last thing, or maybe not the last thing, I just also want to bring up, there's a new resolution that's being put forth by the Assembly, Pat Diagnan and Nancy Pinkin, about Computer Science Week. So it's being memorialized in December as a week for exposing kids to computing, and this is sort of at all levels, K through 12. I'm going to be, you know, so I forwarded the resolution, or the resolution to Israel. He'll obviously work on the implementation of how that's going to look in the schools. But I think it's important that we sort of consider this issue because this is really something that is a growing issue across the state, really for workforce readiness and those kinds of things. Computer science is a very important field, so when we're thinking about the kinds of things that, that we're doing with instructional technology and the kinds of initiatives that we're interested in, we should always keep this in mind. And obviously, I would urge the administration, being small is a hindrance, obviously, we don't have, we have limited resources of staff and, and those types of things, but anything that we can do to promote these kinds of competencies in, you know, the middle grades especially, but at least into the high school, that's something that, that I would certainly be interested in having the students of Highland Park be exposed to.
Dan, can I ask you a question? Was this resolution something that talked about the Hour of Code?
Yes.
Okay, because that's really cool. I actually did it. And I was doing the elementary version, but I could do it, it was very, very, very cool. And it was encouraging students to participate and, and it's free. It was hourofcode.org, I think.
And there's also an app that you can download and the basic idea is, you know, very simplistic computing, computer science, that to sort of introduce anybody to the, to the field and to the logic of things. So interesting developments.
That reminded me of something else that's actually probably more appropriate for old business, but can I?
Why don't you throw it in?
Okay. And this was actually a specific question for the Curriculum Committee. It was brought up at the last meeting about the Study Island and how the students were going to be using that for benchmarking and PARC, sounded like essentially PARC prep. Can we get more information about that? Like what grades, how often? I mean, I'd like to hear that fleshed out, I mean, just, you know.
Study Island is, I'm sorry, Study Island is, I'm sorry, Study Island is, has been purchased by a company called Edmentum and Edmentum is now using, so Study Island itself is not aligned to PARC or Common Core. Edmentum has now combined two of their pieces of software together. They bought Study Island and then they also, there's another part of the company, which is a curriculum company. So this is now sort of a comprehensive online tool that they're selling. I don't know if this is what we're using here. My guess would be no, not yet. We are, the, the Edmentum. Okay, okay, so this is actually something that I've looked into a lot as a practitioner. It's a very, very nice little tool. It has sample lessons, it has all sorts of benchmarking and other sorts of assessments that, that students can do, formative assessments, there's screeners for, for teachers to really be able to determine starting points for students. It's a great support tool. Certainly doesn't replace instruction in the classroom, but it's a great supplemental resource for, for staff members and for students. There's a heavy technology requirement for, for the, for the program, though. And so obviously, that's kind of the, that's one of the things that we'll have to overcome here.
My understanding is that it's already started, though, correct? I mean, that, that they've already started, I mean, so, I mean, I'd be curious to understand, like exactly what do we mean by benchmarking, like and how often are the kids going to be on this? I mean, it was just funny that like a couple of days later, my daughter came home and was like, oh, I had to do this test on the computer and like, you know, was a little freaked out.
I'll address it at the following board meeting.
I appreciate that, thank you, Azri.
Do you have something? I cut you off, I'm sorry.
It's okay.
Okay. Is there any other new business? Okay, public comment number two, the Highland Park Board of Education welcomes public participation and has reserved this time for your comments. Mr. Hirsch, please state your name and your address and sign in on the ledger.
Thank you, Board of Ed. And I have to say, it's really nice being in this room.
You have to state your name.
My name is Matthew Hirsch, I live at 333 Felton Avenue. Let me see if I can write and talk at the same time. Go figure, I can't. See, I am not gifted or talented. I am average and ordinary. And I like it that way. This room is lacking the negativity of a former venue, so I like, it feels good in here. I wanted to address Ms. Chimeruski's. So this is, I mean, this, this was really, one of the things that, you know, we went into, you know, developing a communications plan and I kind of modeled it, I learned some lessons from, from, from what we did at the Borough where it was, you know, really starting from nothing. And I've, over the last few weeks, I've spoken to several members of the task force and kind of gotten their feedback. Some are still really into it, you know, some have kind of, you know, fallen away or are committed to other responsibilities, but, you know, this, one of my main concerns, even going into this from the outset, and I don't want to make this sound more important than it is, but was just developing the capacity, identifying capacity to actually just do any of these things, no matter how simple, whether it's maintaining a Facebook page or, or, or being a curator of information from, from building leaders and from the, and from the administration is essential. Otherwise, you know, we just get up here and we just, you know, we, we throw, we throw some recommendations into the wind and then don't, you know, have anything to, don't have anybody to execute. And having done this at the Borough level, you know, and as somebody who, you know, works a lot, you know, on my day job, I understand how, how, how much commitment it's necessary for a volunteer to come in and actually do the things that are necessary to do and do them well, you know, and not, and do them comprehensively. You know, the Borough level, you know, we started off really small and kind of grew from there. At that point, you know, we relied on volunteerism and then the Borough actually devoted some in-house resources and then they actually hired a 20-hour-a-week person. So this person, and, and I have to, I have, I have to say, our district is immensely lucky to find somebody, to find the volunteer bandwidth to actually do any of this. I mean, I know we all put in a lot of time, you know, into, into education issues, but to actually find somebody to, you know, execute any of this is really important. And so that was, that was a big concern of ours and I know the Board of, and I wasn't here when, when, when that, when the position was posted. And I don't know who, you know, I don't know who actually, you know, you know, submitted an application, but having worked with the person who, who is, you know, who is doing this and, you know, she was a member of the task force, I do feel comfortable that, that, that this will be, you know, somebody who can be quite effective in, in executing our recommendations. So over the next few weeks, I spoke, actually, I spoke with a few people tonight on the task force. Those who are officially on the task force and those who even were unofficially on the task force, but just showed up at every, at every, at every event. And so we're going to figure out a time to meet over the next few weeks with the coordinator and, and, and just, you know, really see what is within our grasp. So, you know, I mean, this is, you know, go figure, I'm putting the horse before the cart, isn't that, isn't that something? So, I mean, that's, that's, you know, that's, that's, that's something that we really wanted to do. We wanted to identify capacity and then see what's, and then see what's possible. Because I don't, you know, we, one, one thing that we really have to identify is the day-to-day relationship between the coordinator and the administration and building leaders. That was something that, you know, at the Borough end, you know, we really had to feel our way out about, you know, with, and, you know, it would have been better had we had a plan in place first with the volunteer bandwidth in place. So I think this, at least it gives, at least it gives the district a little more leverage to actually execute. So that's, I hope that, I hope that answers.
Great, thank you so much, Matt.
All right, thanks.
Is there any other public comment? Okay, we need a resolution to go into an executive session at 6:30 PM on November 17th, 2014, at the Middle School to discuss- 2014, at the Middle School to discuss personnel, litigation, and negotiations.
So moved.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? We need a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Adios.
Adios.